Before we begin our meeting this evening, we'll have an invocation by Reverend Charlie Martin, Earlinger Christian Church, who is delightfully cheery despite his one second, it cost his crimson, his beloved crimson tie to everything.
Thank you for reminding me.
I'm good for that.
Let us pray. Oh God, the Creator of all seasons, we have celebrated a time of Thanksgiving. We moved with anticipation to the celebration of Christmas. And as we do, we are mindful that there are ones in our community who did not have turkey to put on a table. There are ones who do not have a tree to decorate, or presents to put under it, or a home to celebrate. Guide this assembly of leaders as they strive and make decisions to make this community a better place to live for the needy, for the middle class, for the wealthy, for all of us. Guide them, direct them. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
I will call the December 3rd, 2013, meeting of Earlinger City Council to order. Ask if you all would please stand while we pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Hoffman.
Mr. Longshore.
President.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudkamp.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship. Mr. Howard.
Here.
We have a quorum. We know where both of our missing people are. They're not unaccounted for, so we can proceed. You all should have reviewed the minutes of the regular council meeting, November 5th, 2013. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion by Ms. Pitts, second by Ms. Kyle, and a discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Time for our special presentation. Presentations chief. Bob, where are you? There we go. We have a couple tonight, don't we?
Yes, sir.
Couple swearing ends?
Couple swearing ends.
You want to do them together?
Uh, let's do them separate.
Okay. Do the first one, Kyle Thornberry.
Kyle Thornberry, front and center.
Kyle was hired as a dispatcher back in 2008. This past year, we hired him as a patrolman. He completed eighteen weeks of training down DOC JT, and now just completed fourteen weeks of field training. And the day he got released, he had a smile bigger than you can imagine. He's excited.
Good. Kyle Thornberry, are you ready to take the constitutional oath?
I am, sir.
Place your left hand on the bible, raise your right hand.
Do you, Kyle Thornberry, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen hereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of police officer according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of our present Constitution, you, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have you sent a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God?
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Good job.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for affording me this opportunity. It's been a lifelong dream of mine, so I just want to say thank you, former Chief Fields, Chief Aaron's, Assistant Chief Wilson, everyone involved in the hiring process. Thank you for letting this little boy's dream come true. Can't tell you how much of an honor it is to be representing this city, this council, these citizens, and I hope to do a good job for you guys. I'd like to take a second to thank the PSCC staff. For those of you who don't know me, I used to be a dispatcher, so I got my start here at the city of Earlanger. I took a chance on an eighteen-year-old kid out of high school, and I gave him an opportunity to work for this fine city. So Steve Castor, Dave Leonard, Matt Allen, everyone over there in dispatch, thank you very much. Would not be the person I am today if it wasn't for everyone back there. I also like to thank my FTOs, my sergeants, my fellow officers. They've made this transition very smooth for me, very easy. They've accepted me with open arms. Nothing but good things to say about everybody. So I also like to thank my family for supporting me here tonight, to take up a good majority of the audience, it looks like. They've been here through everything, whether it's football games or stuff like this, they're always here in numbers. So thank you. I look forward to serving you guys, and thank you very much.
Somebody who we know who's reappeared, Joel Shepherd.
Joel. Joel retired several months ago, and came back as an SRO slash dare officer. We have two SROs, one in middle school, one in the high school, and we were wanting to get one into grade school. So he alternates throughout the grade schools in the city, not only as an SRO, but also teaches dare for those schools. If you ask Joel, he can tell you it's probably the best job he's ever had. He's really enjoying it, he loves it, he's good with the kids and the faculty, so we're proud and glad to have him back.
Joel, are you ready to take the oath?
Again? Again.
Is the bible if you need it? There you go. Place your left hand on the bible, raise your right hand. Do you, Joel Shepherd, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of school resource officer according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state or out of it, nor have you sent a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God? Welcome back, Joel.
Well, as a man who has preached before, I'll make this short. The first thing I have to say is obviously thank you for the great opportunity. The second thing I have to say is for my wife, after retiring, she also thanks you for hiring me back to get me out of the home. That being said, it is a great opportunity to come back. I lived the little boy's dream and retired from it, but to get to come back and see the kids smile and laugh and be silly is probably the greatest therapy after a career in law enforcement, to remind you that there is a lot of good in the world, because we don't always get to see it. And it's the greatest therapy, and I would encourage anybody to do it. You love to see the kids. Sometimes your heart breaks for them, but you think you have it hard, and then you walk in and talk to them, and you realize life's not so bad. Things are pretty good. So it's a great job. It's a great career, and it's great fun, and I thank you for the opportunity to do it. Thank you, former chief, I still can't, I can't get used to not calling you chief. And thank you to my new chief for the opportunities. And Mayor, thank you for allowing me to come back and serve you city.
Our next presentation is from the area planning commission, Mike Ionis. Mike, there he is, back in the back there. He is here to make a presentation to us on the land use map.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmember. I'm going to go ahead and distribute a couple of reference materials. I ended up to be able to see this coming out, and we might have bad eyes, so I figured I'd collect some stuff off for you. If you have any comments or ideas, please do that in the right moment. If you could help me out a little bit, put your main tag in the file there. Thank you.
Are you really giving a map to these guys?
Excuse me?
Nobody ever asks me for action.
The shape of the city of Earlanger does not reduce it to a profile map.
Okay, what you have before you is the current recommended land use map for the city of Earlanger. The recommended land use map is a major component of the land use element of the comprehensive plan. Kentucky revised statutes require that the comprehensive plan and all the elements within it be evaluated and reviewed every five years. Staff is currently reviewing the land use element, and that's why I'm here tonight. Basically, to get your input as to any changes or revisions that you see with the recommended land use map. So basically, what is the recommended land use map? It's a guide for future land use and development decisions. More specifically, zone changes. When a zone change comes through, Kentucky revised statutes specifically state that before any map amendment is granted, the planning commission, the legislative body, must find that the map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. However, one size does not fit all. Sometimes there are externalities such as the widening of a road, the movement of an interchange, addition of an interchange on a highway, relocation of utilities, and things happen so that maybe the comp plan didn't account for when it was created, more specifically the recommended land use map. So in those cases, the recommended land use map isn't static. It's meant to be flexible. Those colors on that map are not meant to be hard lines, they're meant to be a little bit flexible and soft. So Kentucky revised statutes also states that, in some cases, the existing zoning classification that was given at the time of the adoption of the comprehensive plan may be inappropriate, and a new proposed zoning classification is appropriate. And it also states that sometimes, you know, this is where it accounts for, major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature that were not anticipated when the comprehensive plan was adopted, such as the relocation of utilities, widening of a road, et cetera. So basically, I'd like to just go over your current recommended land use map. There are several areas on the map that are highly identifiable. You have a large cluster, a node of industrial area along Dixie Highway, along Dolwick, and it's clustered around the interchange. There's also, you know, a large node along the interchange on Commonwealth Avenue that is currently identified for commercial retail service development. There's also a large node along the Dixie Highway corridor that's identified for commercial retail service uses, and that's shown in red on your map. And then there's also older residential areas constructed in the forties and fifties. These areas on the map show are identified for residential development between 4.1 and 7.9 units per net acre, and that's shown in that light brown color. There are also some areas on the, in this area that are identified for moderate to higher density residential development ranging from 7.1 to 30 units per net acre. And that basically reflects the existing land use map, because where those high density, those areas that are currently identified for high density residential development are where existing apartment complexes are. And then there is the newer, well, newer suburban part of Earlanger, which has been seeing a lot of development recently, and that's kind of south of Dixie Highway. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd like to open it up basically for your input.
I have a question. This part right here, I mean, this is a school. Is this where Commonwealth Station is currently being proposed?
Uh, yes. Commonwealth Station would be...
Is that like from here, over here?
The look right here would be, it would be on Baker Street, from Baker is...
Oh, is it? Oh, these are names?
It's basically right across there.
Right. What I'm saying, is it like from here, down to here, and across, and I'll visit this whole area here?
It's covered red, I think.
Right here. Just right here. This is the school.
Right.
Okay, and this red would be the attorney's office, and maybe the strip mall there with the marathon.
Yeah, it makes up the extent where the existing, like, commercial node is over there with the Super Bowl, there's that office building, and then over there the marathon, and it goes over those apartments over there, kind of along Centonia. And then, and Commonwealth Station is not actually, the boundaries are not set, and has been approved by state council. It's still in the process of being adopted. But the current boundaries, I can tell you, go along Centonia, and then they go along Earlanger, and then down along those sides of Baker.
So that is also one item that's actually want to discuss with all of you, is if and when that does get adopted, those zoning regulations, we would obviously want to change the recommended land use map to reflect that. The types of uses and the types of, the type of zoning that would be approved. Because currently, it is identified for commercial retail service, and I know that the current draft of the proposed zoning regulations would like to allow mixed use over there, so that would be one item that if and when it would get approved, would, you know, we would like to see a change to reflect the, you know, those approved zoning There is one other item that we would like to identify, and that would be the purple, and that's currently a special development area. That classification will be going away, and that's where the Regal Cinema site is. And basically, we would like to propose to you guys, and you don't have to answer tonight, but, you know, what would you like to see there? Would you like to see a commercial retail service with like the lodging and office, et cetera? Or would you like to see some type of mixed use there? Basically, what would be appropriate there if and when that goes away? And other than that, I mean, most of Earlanger's pretty much built out, there's not a lot of vacant land. The land that is currently, that is currently reserved, retail services is already retail service, so there's not a lot of vacant land to develop, so...
You mentioned the purple area. I think that Mr. Han and others have spent a significant amount of time evaluating the potential for that particular area, and it may not be what you have described, so I think that needs to be discussed some before we settle in on the land use and the comp plan in that particular location.
Okay, we can certainly do that. Like I said, I'd just like to reiterate, this is not something, these decisions that are, whatever we talk about tonight, is just a discussion. We're in the beginning phases of this, and I should have said that before I took input, was we're in the beginning phase. We're just taking input. I'm here to take the input, take it back, and we're gonna, you know, mull it all over, so this might not be the last time you see me. Sorry for you guys, but, like I said, it's just an initial input gathering. We wanted to reach out to all the jurisdictions in the county and basically say, hey, what would you like to see on your recommended land use map? And then we're gonna take all the comments, put them back together, send them all out to you guys, and then try to piece this map together.
Any questions?
Okay. And do you have, do you have anything?
I have a question, it's quite stupid, but when I look at this map, some of these places are already filled in. I don't think we can change zoning. Be interesting to see a map like the industrial and the special development. I know that there's stuff not there. But I mean, some of the industrial, is that all filled in, or how does that work? The gray part.
This is just basically a recommended land use map, not existing.
Okay.
So currently, there's gonna be, over there, there's vacant land, but this is basically saying, if and when development comes in, we want to see industrial in these areas, or we want to see commercial retail service in these areas. So this is basically recommended land use for what the city would like to see, and its citizens would like to see in a certain area. So it's not what is currently there, but if something were to come into that area, or maybe there's a redevelopment along Dixie Highway, we want to see, whether they take the building down, we want to see, you know, maybe commercial retail come back. We certainly don't want to see somebody take down, you know, a, you know, a large tract of land and then put up single-family homes in a commercial area. So basically, this is what the city and the citizens would like to have, what the type of development they would like to see in an area.
And on the purple area, where it's a special development area, is that what we're supposed to, are we supposed to rename that zone?
Well, basically, kind of what you would like to see there. So would you like to see industrial there? Would you like to see commercial retail service? Would you like to see office? Would you like to see lodging or residential? And that's basically what we, what we kind of are here to talk about is...
I know, we've worked on that for years.
And that what we're gonna talk about next week at the meeting? That's Commonwealth Station.
That's the 17th. That's the 17th of December. I thought we were talking commercial there, where...
The goal, well, David's been working on this.
Yeah.
Duke Energy's already made it a site-ready, one of their site-ready projects.
Site-ready.
And, you know, we're waiting for the big campus to come along and want to locate there. Could be medical facility, whatever. It's the most highly visible and probably the most important undeveloped area of the city. And it's, the market's gonna determine a lot of what goes there, but, you know, we can call on anything we want to, but it's gonna depend on who wants to come knocking on our doors.
We spent a lot of money acquiring a concrete plant. We've worked hard to try to solicit interest from Kentucky Public Transportation and the governor's office on supporting that area. I will tell you that that particular area, anything above the second floor of a building in the showcase property can see downtown, can see the river. There's, it's exposure to I-75 and I-275 and all the traffic coming north and south on 75, and coming to the airport, going to Cincinnati, passes that site. It has great potential, and we don't want it screwed up.
So can I just take away two action items? So we, the council would be in favor of the Commonwealth Station if and when those zoning regulations come through, you would want to change the map to reflect...
Correct.
...the type of regulations that went into place, and the land uses to allow for those regulations. And then two, how would you like me to take action with that, the special development area, the Regal Cinema site? I work with Dave, maybe to...
Work with Dave and Jim.
Work with Dave and Jim, then? Okay. So I can do that?
With Mark.
With Mark?
With Mark.
Okay, I can do that. Will do. Okay, are there any other questions, or any other areas? Like I said, the city's pretty much, pretty well-built out, so there's not a lot of, you know, and a lot of the subdivisions are already, you know, plotted for the remaining vacant lands, so... Is there any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
On this Commonwealth Station, you said something about when we get all the zoning and stuff the way you want it. There's a meeting on the 17th...
Yes, ma'am.
...that basically has backed off on some of that development in that area, has basically backed off, is my understanding, the email that I got, on the businesses that are already there, that would only come back to like Earlanger and Earlanger Road and Riggs to take that attorney office, and to leave the residential things alone.
Right.
I think you at least need to wait until they have that meeting before you jump in and start...
Oh, we wouldn't change that until after that process is done. Yeah, we would let that move its way through, and then, as soon as, like I said, as I was saying before, yeah, we wouldn't change that, and we're still in the beginning phases of this. So as we move through, the comp plan probably won't be adopted until, and all the elements of the comp plan won't be adopted, I think, until like July or sometime next summer, so I think by the end of the fiscal year is what we're shooting for in the timeline. So hopefully, we'll have the Commonwealth Station, all that figured out. And you are correct, the boundary did get reduced from Congress in a couple of those other streets back there, all the way back to Centonia, and then like right where Riggs and Earlanger is. And then there's a little bit on both sides of Baker Street where the bank is, and that other converted residential building that's offices now. And then it's on this side right here, in this, you know, government building here, and then the adjacent building, and then the vacant piece of land at the end there, so... But yeah, that would be an if and when thing. So if and when that goes through, we'll go ahead and change the map to reflect the type of development that is in that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mike.
Well, if anybody has any questions, feel free to contact me at the office, if you have anything, shoot me an email.
Keep going, keep going, for next week's meeting. Sure.
Might want to keep the rest of these.
I think it's actually two weeks. This is 17th, isn't it?
Okay, our next presenter is a new business car town. Mary Ryder is here to talk to us. Good to see you, Mary.
Good to see you too. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I want to thank Mark Fields for inviting me. Again, my name is Mary Ryder, and I am the owner of Move Your Body Fitness. I'm here just to create awareness of my studio. It is fairly new to Earlanger. I've been around for just two months. I am located on Commonwealth Avenue in the Palmer Building, and I wanted to just come here tonight to share a little bit about myself, as well as my studio, and just to ask the city to partner with me to help promote fitness within the city. So just to share a little bit about myself, I have been a resident of Earlanger for thirty-seven years. My husband and I actually are living in the house that I grew up in on Place Street. We both graduated from Lloyd High School, and we also have children that go there as well. I began my fitness journey a few years ago by taking my first Zumba class and immediately became addicted. I've struggled with weight all my life, and Zumba has really been the only thing that's really helped me lose weight. I became an instructor two years ago and just absolutely love it, so I wanted to share my passion with the community by opening my own studio, and what, you know, a better place to open it, you know, than Earlanger. I live literally two minutes away from the studio, so I could walk there on a nice day if I had to. So just to kind of show you a little bit about, I don't know if I'm pushing the right one, I just want to go over a few items, some description of my classes. I won't bore you with... I won't bore you with, you know, all of the specifics, but I do have some unique classes that I do offer at my studio. Um, we do offer yoga, we offer Zumba, um, we offer Seitai, which is a, a Japanese form of yoga. Um, we also offer Zumba toning, Zumba for Kids, Ript Payo, and we have happy hour specials. Um, that's something I would like to touch, uh, base on, um, a little bit, because that's been very popular since we've been open. Um, but the Zumba for Kids also is something I'm very passionate about, that I also would like, um, maybe some assistance with, um, just getting some awareness out to the local school, schools and daycares. Um, the kids just love this class, and it's, it's just a lot of fun, actually, that that's one of my favorite classes that I teach. Um, but like I said, I, I won't bore you with, you know, the specifics of what the classes are, you're familiar with what yoga is and what Zumba is. Um, but the happy hour specials, what I do is I offer this every Friday at seven o'clock. And it's a different class, um, that I offer each week, just brings a different variety to the studio and to the community. Um, we've had great success. Um, I, I did put a couple of pictures in here of the students doing the different types of classes, um, and it's just been a lot of fun. I do have seven, seven instructors, including myself. We're all licensed in what we do, and we are CPR certified. Um, you know, each of the instructors are dedicated to the success of Move Your Body. They do promote each of their classes, um, on our website, as well as on our, our Facebook page. So why I'm here, again, is just to create awareness of my, my new studio, um, as well as partner with the city. Um, I did meet with, um, Mark Fields, as well as Officer Ailer, um, on just some different ideas of what we can do, um, you know, to partner with each other. Um, I would, you know, be open to offering my studio to the city during times when we're not in use. I do have a full-time job, I work at Fidelity Investments, so typically, um, my classes are in the evenings. Um, you know, I would love to offer the, the city employees discounts on the classes if they're interested. Um, I also want to incorporate the importance of fitness, again, like at local schools and daycares, um, and then just help spread the word to the other local businesses in the area. So, um, a couple of, um, important points of why Move Your Body Fitness versus a gym. Um, you know, I, I don't require a membership, there's no cancellation fee. Um, you know, I've listed some, several good points up here. It's a welcoming environment. People are not intimidated when they walk into the studio. Um, we're really just a big family, and, and over the past couple of months, just starting out with a, a class of maybe three or four followers from LA Fitness to, I've got 18 to 20 people in my classes now, and it's, it's just a lot of fun. People literally are leaving with smiles on their faces and just, just drenched with, with working out. So it's, it's such a great feeling. Um, you know, my, my prices are very competitive. You will, uh, any of the, the other fitness facilities around, um, you'll see that my, my prices are much lower, um, in the area, so that's another good point. But it's a great location, and, um, I really can sum it up in two words, is Mary Ryder. So that's why you should come. Um, so really, again, um, just wanted to keep it quick and to the point, um, just to let you guys know that I, I am, um, now a business owner in the city of Erlanger, and if you have any questions, I'm, I'm open to them.
You're open seven days a week?
Yes, yes, sir. Again, typically, classes are in the evenings. I do have some morning classes on the weekends, and I have a few during the week, but those haven't been doing very well, so not really sure if I've hit the, the stay-at-home moms, um, yet or not, but, yeah.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I would like to say something, Mike. Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you. It's one of those days.
Will you be offering more of those self-defense courses if you can?
Yes, that was actually a very popular class that, um, my students have asked for again, so I'll probably offer that, um, sometime in the first quarter of 2014.
Mary came in and we talked with, 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 uh, Greg Ailer, who's in charge of the Wellness Program for the city, and what we were looking for, because the classes that we're putting on have become pretty popular, and we've, we've kinda run out of room of the place to have it. They're actually using, uh, Tishner Middle School, and actually using the hallways, uh, to put on these, you know, for our, for our employees. So Mary's been working with Greg to, to try to work out something where maybe we can help each other just a little bit, maybe using her facilities for some of the classes. I know many of you have been to those classes, they've been very popular. And I did send the information to the school superintendent, just to hopefully, you know, maybe they'll be in contact, because the, the children was the first time I'd ever heard of doing any of this Zumba for Kids, and it was one of those things that I know we're really pushing now with all the fitness craze for the children, so, uh, I did send that.
Thank you very much. I, I did have a, a Saturday, um, free class for Zumba for Kids ages four to six, and it was very successful. The children loved, and, and I actually, I think I had more fun than they did, but it was, it was a great success. So thank you for passing my information along.
Yeah, and I saw Greg today, and he said, please call him.
Okay, I will. Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions? Thank you very much for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bob, are you here? Why I think you're here?
Yes, sir.
Why don't, I don't wanna, why don't you go ahead and talk now, so you don't have to sit through the agenda? This is my friend, Bob Winter, he's a, an attorney. City attorney for Park Hills for years, and a lot of other things.
Mayor Ross, ladies and gentlemen, uh, my name is Robert A. Winter, Jr. I reside at 419 Larksburg Court in Edgewood. Um, just to inform you that there's been a vacancy, uh, in the Kenton Circuit Court with retirement of Judge Martin Sheehan. Uh, some of you may know what circuit courts do, it's the Court of General Jurisdiction, they handle felony cases, uh, they handle the larger civil cases. So if, uh, you think you, if you get the words, "I'm gonna sue you," that's generally where you're gonna be sued at, or, "Oh, my God, I've been sued." Well, it's generally in, in the circuit court. And I'm here to tie, uh, I'm a candidate for, uh, to fill Judge Sheehan's shoes as Kenton Circuit Judge. Just two points I'd like to speak with you. The first is qualifications and experience. Uh, I've been litigating cases for approximately 29 years. I graduated fourth in my law school class, I have an MBA in finance and labor, I have an accounting undergraduate, um, I've appeared in criminal cases, uh, primarily in Kenton, the three county areas. I've appeared in, uh, administrative cases and matters before federal and state administrative bodies, but to tell you the truth, my strength is in civil cases and civil litigation. Uh, I've done everything from administrative law, A, to zoning, B, and everything in between. Uh, I've had the pleasure of representing individual citizens and large corporations. I've worked in some pretty big, uh, in a big law firm, and in several smaller and medium-sized firms. As, uh, Mayor has said, I, I was the city attorney for Park Hills for several years, so I understand municipal law, I understand what you'll go through in operations, finance, budgeting, uh, and all the other, uh, travails that, uh, the city has to go through. I've had the honor of serving as a law clerk for Judge Burlesman, our federal district court judge. Uh, I've been rated, uh, AV preeminent by Martindale-Hubbell, and that's lawyer talk for having the highest possible, uh, legal ability, as rated by your peers, and also the highest legal ethics. So I've had a lifetime of, uh, legal experience to serve as your Kenton Circuit Court Judge. But something that is more than just ability, and that is, is it gonna be fair and impartial? Uh, perhaps you've heard of some cases where, uh, your friends have felt, well, that judge, uh, you know, not in this county, of course, but elsewhere. Well, you're gonna be electing a judge on May 20th of 2014. Not a pre-judge, not somebody who has already decided the case before the evidence has been taken and the decision's made based on that evidence. I have no agenda, I have no preconceived notions. I promise you that if you have the facts on your side, and you're able to get that, those facts into evidence under our rules of court that we, we need to have, and if the law is on your side based on those facts, I promise you, you will win before me every time, every time. No agendas, no preconceived notions guaranteed every time. Last thing I'd like to say is, uh, I'm a Navy veteran. I've had the honor of serving as the supply officer on USS Lewis and Clark, which is a nuclear-powered, uh, fleet ballistic missile submarine before they retired it. Um, we were entrusted, I was entrusted with the logistical support of nuclear power and nuclear weapons aboard that submarine. Um, I was designated qualified in submarines, and they awarded me the Navy Achievement Medal following that service. Ladies and gentlemen, the election, uh, for the primary for the Kenton Circuit Court, as I've indicated, will be on May 20th of 2014, and I ask that you consider me as your next Kenton Circuit Judge. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Good evening. I'm looking for the busy, but excuse me, sir.
Absolutely. I'm not a judge, I'm just a mayor. Yeah, that's right. Mayor's report. Slim this evening. I've been busy. Been all over the state, appeared at, uh, five different locations since September for the Kentucky Law Update. Um, have, um, had a good Thanksgiving, didn't get to travel to Virginia, because they, the time I was supposed to be going through the mountains, they were having three to five inches. And discretion being the better part of valor, I kept my fanny right here. Um, I, uh, wanna, I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving. We express our, our sympathy to my good friend, John Dunhoff, on the loss of his father. Uh, friend of ours at church, Dottie Durham, lost her father, and, and of course, we know Representative Callahan, who was a good friend to all of Northern Kentucky, not just Campbell County's passed away. So we've had losses this week, which we, which we mourn, and we, we, uh, share it with, share their grief with them. Um, it's the holiday season, there's going to be a lot of people out and around, and I'll say the same thing I say every year, don't drink and drive. Call somebody to come pick you up or take you. There's nothing worse than a life lost around the holidays. There's nothing worse than, than jail around the holidays, uh, because like those commercials say, um, our police are like those ghosts sitting in the corner, and when you walk by, all of a sudden, they become real, because our guys do a great job. We don't need our Farm Department or our EMS squads out picking up bodies during the holidays. So please be safe. That's all I have this evening. We'll move on to reports to standing committees. At, speaking of calls, there they go. First is Public Safety and Police, Ms. Pitts.
Everybody should have received their, um, police report, except for me. If there's anybody else that didn't get one, please, um, let, I guess, Missy know. Maybe their email address was left off, but I do have it in the house. So, other than that, Chief Aaron's is in the house?
Chief Aaron's?
That was a dead intention. Nothing for the report, sir.
Any questions of, uh, Chief Aaron's or the committee? Thank you. Public Safety, Fire and EMS, Ms. Skidmore, Mr. Dunhoff.
I have a couple of things. The Fire, and obviously, this is October's report, because by the time we get to December, and because of the timeframe, we're always like a month, at least a month behind with our information. So this is for October. The Fire and EMS department made a total of 264 responses for the month, which were 99 fire incidents and 165 EMS patients' dispatches during the month of October. There were five reported fires in the city of Erlanger, and a total of 94 non-fire rescue events during the month. EMS responses included a total of 119 transported, one treated with no transport, and 43 canceled miscellaneous dispatches during the month. Also, most everybody realizes that October is fire prevention month, and with that, that's the month that all of the, um, drills and safety precautions and procedures are, um, revisited with the schools, the businesses. I think all, Lloyd, Lindham, and Miles, Tishner, all had their school fire drills, the businesses were involved, employee fire safety, everything kind of hinged on fire safety for that entire month, with lots of things being taken care of. That's it for the Fire Report. JD, did you have any questions?
I have nothing.
And Chief?
Chief's in the house.
Chief Whitaker.
We have quite an accomplishment to, uh, the needs to be recognized. However, that person is, is not present tonight, but I wanna make sure that it's made mention of. Uh, Todd Scholkers, um, is receiving his 25 years of service pin, which is quite an accomplishment, 25 years in any profession, any career needs to, um, needs recognition. Uh, little known fact, Todd and I actually met in 1988 in the spring, because we graduated EMT class together. So it's truly a small world. Um, that year, 1988, he was hired as a part-time EMT, and that was with the Erlanger Rescue Squad. I don't remember that, some of you may remember that. Um, 1991, he became full-time EMT. Uh, that same year, he was promoted to a tenant. Um, 1992, when they formed the Erlanger Fire EMS Department, Todd was hired as a full-time firefighter EMT. 1988, he became an administrative officer, 10 years later, administrative captain, and at this time, 2010, or 2010, he was promoted to assistant chief, which is the title he currently holds. Um, some things about Todd that you may not know, he is a fire service, fire science instructor for the state. He travels the state and instructs, um, firefighters all over. He's also known OSHA instructor, first aid, uh, first responder instructor. He's a member of the Kentucky Community Crisis Response Team, member of the Kentucky Incident Management Team. Um, some things I didn't know here, he was the Public Safety Director for Paul Michaels and Company. I don't know how far that goes back. Um, also the author of the BLS, Basic Life Support Protocols for the department. Uh, he was previous Officer of the Year. And there's one thing that I wanna see, is the picture of him on a horseback with hair, because evidently, he was, he was the, uh, lifeguard slash horseback riding instructor at Marydale, and I expect to see a picture. If I had it, I would've put it up. But he's not here tonight, but I wanted to make sure that that was recognized. Thank you.
Anything else, Chief? Any questions, the Chief or the committee? Seeing none with Public Works, Mr. Cahill, Mr. Brown.
Uh, yes, Mr. Bogart couldn't be here tonight because of a family issue, they had to take care of the original. But, uh, this is the last, last week of the leaf collection, so kudos to the team, they've done a really good job keeping the leaves off the side of the road. And, uh, I just wanna mention that the pothole line opens on 1221, so Bogart will be manning that at 1:47. 727-389, so if you wanna give him a break, you can actually use the, uh, website. And then, uh, Mr. Brown has a few things.
Just have a couple of things. Uh, we have an emergency proposal for, uh, Pleasure Isle Emergency Landside Repair later, and then we also have a bid for, uh, Erlanger Gateway Project Phase Two.
Ed is here representing.
Anything to say, Ed? Any questions of the committee or Mr. Milken? Very good, we'll move on. Administration, Mr. Burke, Mr. Longshore.
Yes, I've got a couple of things. Uh, I wanna mention that the offices of the city will be closed the 24th and 25th of December, and also on January 1st. Uh, let's see here, we did 58 passports last month, and the waste collection will be a day late, it will not be collected on December 25th or January 1st.
Just as long as it's not a dollar short.
But, uh, that's all I've got, and we got Missy, if she has anything.
Ms. Andrews, do you have anything this evening? Shane, anything?
Nope, we also have, uh, Mark is in the house as well. Cause he knows, I mean, Mr. Haan.
Mr. Haan, if he had.
Mr. Haan was here. David, you got anything to say?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Sir.
Mark didn't have anything yet.
Any question? That's why he's not here.
Well, one, they asked me. I knew he wasn't here, so I didn't forget.
One of the things that Council, you all may know, is, is one of the things that Mark Fields has been doing is he, AO is, uh, reorganizing departments, and Mark Stewart is now, is not under the umbrella of the Farm Department anymore, he's under the, the umbrella of the general administration. So he and Dave then can work very closely together on inspections and things like that. That's why he's reporting here instead of under Fire. If I hadn't forgot both of them, anyway. Okay, any questions? Finance, Mr. Hyer, Mr. Hyer, committee of one tonight.
Yes, Mayor, uh, there was a Finance Committee meeting on November the 19th, uh, which, at which time Chris, Chris Flag came from Descosmo and Company, presented an audit report for the fiscal year ending Jan, June 30th, June 30th, 2013, and since that time, copies of the complete report... And since that time, copies of the complete report have been distributed to the mayor, the council, department heads. In addition, copies have been forwarded to the Kentucky Department Heads, the Kentucky Department for Local Government, and the trustee banks for the city's outstanding bonds. I want to let you know that I thought they did another fantastic job this year. Greg and his staff worked great on this, with this audit report, so my hats off to these guys for the work they've done for this, getting this all together. It's pretty, it's pretty complicated, pretty time-consuming as well, so I want to make sure we let Greg know how, so we appreciate all the work he's done in that regards. Staff has also prepared and emailed copies of September thirtieth financial statements to the city council as well. They are currently working on the year-end IRS requirements such as the ten-ninety-nines and non-cash employee benefit reporting. A financial statement for the October thirty-first, twenty thirteen should be completed and distributed to each member of council sometime within the next two weeks. And Greg Eggelman is in the house.
Any to add, Greg?
No, nothing to add.
Any questions to the committee or Mr. Eggelman? Seeing none, we will move on to Friendship City Networking. Ms. Kyle, Ms. Cahill.
The administration, Karen, who does our events, that had the senior Thanksgiving luncheon, and it took place on Wednesday, November the twentieth, from ten-thirty to one at the Erlanger Branch of the Kenton County Library. This event was well-attended with a final tally of a hundred-and-sixty seniors. Colonial Cottage provided boxed lunches consisting of turkey, dressing, green beans, and corn muffins. After dinner, the seniors were served chocolate, pumpkin, and coconut cream pie, also provided by Colonial Cottage. Everyone enjoyed the dinner as well as participating in the annual history trivia challenge. Betty Rossman was this year's biggest winner. Maybe that was a fix, I'm not really sure about that. Door prizes were given away to the seniors. Karen would like to thank the city of Erlanger Police, Fire EMS, Public Works, and Administration volunteers, as well as members of council who volunteer their time to help out with this event. She would also like to thank Chris Oaks and the library for their help and for doing such a great job.
I'm going to report on our upcoming Christmas events. First of all, on Sunday, December the eighth, the city of Erlanger will be cosponsoring a holiday extravaganza at the Erlanger Branch of the Kenton County Public Library from one-thirty to four p.m. Santa will pay a visit from one-thirty to two-thirty, and they're going to have Christmas crafts until the supplies run out. Then, we'd like to announce our city's Holiday Open House on Friday, December twentieth, from five to eight p.m. The city of Erlanger will hold their annual Holiday Open House for employees and retirees along with their families. And if you have little ones, Santa will be here paying us a visit from six to seven p.m. And we hope to see everybody there at this festive event. And we'd like to thank Karen for organizing all these things so far this year. She does a great job, fantastic job.
Very good. Anything else? Becky, do you have anything to add tonight? Okay, any questions to committee? We'll now move on to reports to special committees. First, the Compensation Committee. Mr. Fields.
I sent y'all an email back on the twenty-seventh containing what, where we were in the compensation project so far and what we wanted to do moving forward. I know I did answer some questions that everybody had about that. Does anybody have any questions about what that, our plan is going forward in January?
That's a good work.
Well, thank you.
It's awesome.
So what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and try to implement this. Been working with Greg and Missy a lot about doing this, getting it into payroll and doing these things. We think we've come up with a pretty good plan to do it. And I think when you see, when we do the budget back in, you know, whenever we get together in February or March for the next year, you'll see that it probably all worked out in this year's budget with maybe just a couple changes, but very minor changes. So don't worry about that one going forward. We'll also have a plan to do the merit increases and the new bands. I have that, I've talked to Mr. Wickman, and we'll get together with the ordinance to get it done, so we can be adopting those. So you'll get those before January sometime, okay? Also, we would like to have, I'd like to request that we get a committee meeting in January, so we can talk about January twenty-first, so we can talk about IT direction, which way we're going. We've been working a lot about doing some changes, you know, we just changed cellular services. Everybody has switched over now with new devices as far as the staff goes with the new cellular service. So that all goes along with that whole project and where we're moving with monies and things. So if we could have a meeting in January, I would like to do that, too, a committee meeting.
It will be ostensibly a meeting of the Administration Committee, but since it's IT, we all should be here. Any other questions of the Compensation Committee of Mr. Fields on this issue? All right, very good. Patty's not here. Anybody can report on the Garden Committee. Missy, anything to say?
No.
Okay, you all have heard the reports of standing and special committees. I entertain a motion to be adopted, it's presented motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Ms. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any reports from any of our representatives to the groups that we participate in? Okay, we'll move on to reports of city operations. Mr. Vioxx, our city engineer.
Yes, sir. As the, as recognized in the Public Works Report tonight, we have an emergency proposal you have on your desk, read it. And this is a, Pleasure Isle Drive is a dead-end drive along Banklett Creek. I hope you all know where that is. Recently, there was a landslide and some short-term repairs have been made. The landslide is into the Banklett Creek and is infecting the Pleasure Isle Drive and accessing the residents along that area, near the traditions, or transitions, I'm sorry. There's only one entrance for the residents. To avoid further erosion, it is imperative that a final pair repairs are made to the landslide area as soon as possible. Because of the condition of Pleasure Isle Road and the urgency of the repair, we, myself, and Thelon Associates, who we secured to design the repair, are recommending the city award the contract to Advanced Contractors and Estimators, Inc., ACC and E, in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seven sixty-five. They completed the previous repairs and are familiar with the site. Hopefully that, this recommendation is sufficient for council to make the decision. Mr. Wickman will have to tell you what you have to do to make that decision, but we're, Rick and I and Thelon and Associates are all satisfied that this company who did the repair last time, and unfortunately, this time, we're going to have to pay for it. Last time, we had the support of the state funds to assist us in it, but those aren't available to us at this point, and it is an emergency and these people don't have a way in and out, and we don't have a way to get our emergency equipment in and out to service the property if we don't take care of it pretty quickly.
Frank?
Yes, sir.
Because this is emergency legislation, explain, we haven't done it so well, explain to council what the procedure is.
Well, normally, when you're awarding contracts with an estimated cost of more than twenty thousand dollars, you're required by statute to advertise that contract for bids and then consider the bids that you get and award the contract. We don't have time to do that because of the weather that might prevent us from doing the work. We went through the advertising process and then accepted the bids. There is an exception to that statute, and it provides that if the mayor determines that an emergency exists, then the advertising requirements do not apply. So we have prepared that executive order for the mayor to do that. The only thing the council needs to do is to approve the recommendation of Mr. Vioxx to award the contract.
And the mayor has determined that to be an emergency. I've actually...